Thing you do for us, Lord God, Lord, we just ask that you just be with us tonight, Lord God, if we make these hard decisions, Lord God, for this town and, and the people have the understandings of what's going on, Lord God, in that all these decisions that we made, your will, Jesus, be my prayer.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I pledge a civility, we will be respectful of one another even when we disagree, we will direct all comments to the issues, we will avoid personal attacks. So we're gonna open up the item with a public hearing, item number one, ordinance number 2025 dash oh eight, and ordinance of the town council of the town of Hilliard, Florida, a municipal corporation regulating the water and sewer usage rates in accordance with the town charter, section four point one, or five, action requiring an ordinance and further stated in chapter fifty eight utilities of the town code and providing for effective debt. Do we have any public comment? Okay, okay, go to the presentation.
That's mine. Yeah. My name is Diana Stewart, I'm with the Florida Rule Water Association, and I'm here tonight to represent the rate study, I know y'all have heard from me before, but wanted to bring it back up to the public, maybe if it'll advance. A little bit about Florida Rule Water, we are a nonprofit organization, and we do, are here to assist the water systems and wastewater systems with every phase of their operation. Okay, sorry about that. The information that was used to, in this rate analysis, we looked at the twenty-three, twenty-four actual revenues and expenditures for the water and sewer department, we looked at your budget for the fiscal year twenty-five, which was what was available to us at the time this was completed. We also added in a three percent consumer price index increase to all of your O and M expenses, future O and M expenses, and then to apply the anticipated revenues, we looked at the number of your current customers, the annual water usage, and then we also looked at your current rates. What we found is that there is a one percent, or a one cent sales tax that's being collected for a capital fund, that money is also having to be used for routine replacement and management costs. As you can see here from the, the graph, I know they're a little small there, but the red line just shows you where you're, where you're at with your current revenues, that drop is, we're having to wean this off, those capital project, the R and R should not be paid by that one cent, and it's depleting your reserves, so you do not have that money available to be able to put to capital projects that are needed. If you choose not to do anything and raise rates, you are looking at having a deficit, you're already gonna have a deficit of about a hundred and, over a hundred and seven, seventy-two thousand dollars at the end of fiscal year twenty-five, that's what you did have. You should, if you don't raise rates, you will deplete your entire unrestricted reserve by the end of this fiscal year, which is fiscal year twenty-six. This is very tiny, and I do apologize, I could not make it any bigger, but if you have copies of it, this is your capital, okay, this is your capital improvement plan that was supplied, provided to us, we did put this into the rate study, this, I have, you can't see it, but I have marked with an asterisk on that to identify what is actually routine maintenance and should not be getting funded by that one cent sales tax. That way, you will see that we will need to, that's why we're having to raise the rates. The other issue here is you will look at, you have a lot of projects that are coming forward, which are great, you do need to be doing this maintenance, you do need to be putting this into play, but you are counting on grants for a lot of things, and if that grant money does not come available, then what I've suggested here is gonna need to increase more. In twenty, two thousand and twenty-three, the town adopted asset management plans for their drinking water and wastewater, those were adopted by resolutions twenty, twenty-three, eighteen, and nineteen. In these plans, it identified the costs that you should be putting back every year for regular asset maintenance, that number there that is circled in red, that is the number that we're showing right now, keep in mind that this is a low number, this number only reflects what was actually assessed in, what assets were actually assessed, so things like underground lines were not included in this, those are extra costs that you need to be applying for, vehicles, your utility vehicles, water meters, those were not in that plan, so these are also assets that you need to be planning for replacement value. You will see that that number there is much larger than the number that you will see on the capital financing plan, that reason is because y'all are doing a great job of budgeting and planning for routine maintenance, however, you just have to have the funds in order to make that happen. So just to recap, some of the things that were in this plan, we did identify the asset management costs, the additional costs that are gonna be needed after, are starting in twenty, fiscal year twenty-seven, the items on the capital improvement plan have been identified, so you know what's capital and what's routine maintenance, and then the one percent sales tax transfer is being reduced annually to cover only capital expenditures as funds are available. What you can expect from these rate increases is that all of your expenses should be covered without the use of unrestricted reserves by the end of fiscal year twenty-eight, however, that is dependent on when this is implemented, when this was first given, it was intended to be implemented by October one, every month that you delay implementing this, you are losing money, over five thousand dollars in water and over twenty-three thousand dollars in wastewater every month. This is just a graph to kind of give you an idea of where you're at, the columns represent your current expenses, your O and M costs, your debt, your future debt, and then the capital projects that are needed, again, the red line is showing where your existing revenues are and then where they will be in the future if you do not make a rate increase, and then the gray line represents where they need to go to. This is just a table of that graph that we showed, you can see the bottom line here is showing that negative in the water, I will also bring out that all of these rate increases are additionally adding a ten percent growth, you've expected some growth, there's a facility that's coming in, some development that's coming in, and over the next three years, starting in twenty-seven, you're expecting ten percent growth every year, if that doesn't happen, you'll have to readdress these rate increases. This is what your wastewater looks like, and you can see the water is looking much better than the wastewater, you're unable to cover your, or will be unable, you can't cover your cap, capital, but you will be unable to cover your debt, I want to point out the issue with covering your debt, you cannot get future loans if you can't pay your debt back, if you have existing debt and you're not able to make those payments, then you're, they're gonna force you to raise your rates, and it's gonna be what they tell you to do. This is your wastewater, and you can see on this one, you are expected through fiscal year twenty-six to have to borrow monies from your unrestricted reserves to be able to balance. Speaking of reserves, there is not a one size fits all two reserves, but we do caution you to try and keep a minimum of ninety days of operating and maintenance expenses on hand for emergencies, reserves are used for capital projects, looking at demand that you will have coming up, asset management, asset replacement, and of course, the dreaded natural disasters that we tend to have a lot of here in Florida. Today, your wells may be doing good, everything's functioning well, but tomorrow, when you have to drill a new well because it's caved in, where's the money coming from, those are things that you need to think about with reserves and having those on hand. This is what your unrestricted reserve balance looks like as of twenty-five, the end of twenty-five, you have about five hundred thousand dollars in your reserves, however, due to the expenses that you, you have coming up this year, you're gonna be using quite a bit of that, so that will drop you below that ninety days, that is not something I will normally do when I present a rate study, I always try to keep everyone at that ninety days, but I was concerned about the impact that this is gonna have anyway, so we did make it as minimum as possible, so you are looking at eighty-two days of O and M with the hope that there's no emergencies that come into play there, but over the next few years, you should be able to gradually build that back up. This is what it looks like if you do nothing, you will deplete all of your reserves as of the end of this fiscal year, and you will have a deficit, and you'll have to go and find money elsewhere. So this is what the new rates look like, we're suggesting that we increase the inside rates to nineteen twenty-nine, outside rates to twenty-four eleven, and then the usage tiers will be three dollars and sixty-two cent for the first six thousand gallons per thousand gallons used, and six forty-three over that for every thousand gallons used, outside would be four fifty-two and eight oh four, the commercial rates would be forty-five oh one for inside, fifty-six twenty-seven outside, a dollar fifty-two for the first two thousand gallons inside, and a dollar ninety-nine outside, four, four eighty-two over, from two thousand to ten, six dollars and three cent outside, six forty-three over ten thousand inside, and eight dollars and four cent outside, I won't read all the rest of these, but the wastewater, here we are, so the base rate is going to thirty-two oh eight, and the commercials are going to seventy-four, thirty-one inside the city. Let y'all look at that just for a second, here's what you can expect the new bills to be. If you use the average right now, that your city's using, because residential customers are using about three thousand gallons, so that's what they can expect the rate to be if they are water and sewer users, and then the commercial rates are on the other side. Now, this too is not a great graph, but I will, I know you probably can't see it, but, and it's, this is not gonna show, up at the top there, it has the monthly water and sewer bill is sixty-eight forty-five, this was done in twenty-twenty, I was not able to, I didn't have, due to time constraints, I couldn't put together the costs that are, for a system your size right now in twenty-five, however, back in twenty-twenty, you can see that was the average was a sixty-eight forty-five dollars for a system your size, okay, keep in mind that you can't, you have to, can't measure apples and oranges, okay, J E A, their rates are gonna be a whole lot lower, right, other cities may be a whole lot lower, but that's because they're a lot larger, all right, so you have to compare it to systems your size, and this shows the average around this state for thousand to three thousand customers, so we're not far off, and this is five years ago, it is before the inflation hit us off. That is my presentation.
Thank you.
Questions?
All right. Okay. I do have a letter here that I wanted to read. To mayor and city council members, I am writing to express my strongest opposition to the proposed forty-nine percent sewer and twelve percent water increase to our town in Hilliard Utilities, I am not able to attend the public hearing regarding this matter, as I will be away on November twentieth for an event that has been planned for months, I ask you that you consider the following, and also request that this letter be read and to the record for the hearing on November twentieth, twenty twenty-five. As a resident and rate payer in this community, I am sincerely concerned about the very negative impact these excessive increases would have on my household budget, as well as my fellow residents of Hilliard, such rate hikes would exacerbate our already strained finances, certainly you must be aware of the tough economic factors affecting us already, and these excessive proposed increases should make, just make it worse, just because there are, there may have been poor govern, governance and management in the past, it does not justify such a severe reaction for the present, what took years to create such problems, especially infrastructure, with the Hilliard Utilities should not be expected to be solved relatively overnight, this is an undue burden to your tax and rate payers, I presume the rate studies accurately depict current fiscal conditions, but have you consulted with a qualified outside financial advisor to ascertain viable alternatives, there may be other methods of accomplishing your objectives such as bonding, government loans, state revolving loan program, et cetera, I think it is imperative you find some other means than overburden your residents, I've worked for local governments for some forty-five years until retirement, and have never seen such high rate increases proposed in all my years of experience, a combined increase of sixty-one percent is not the answer, I urge you to pursue other means with less negative impact upon the town of Hilliard rate payers, thank you for your time and consideration, and I hope you will take my concerns into account as you make your final decisions regarding this important matter, sincerely, Kim Lineback, thirty-seven oh one, Cypress Lane, Hilliard, Florida. All right. Now, with this will be whenever the agenda item. Okay, now, I know that we have some, some requests to speak on this item, but do we have anybody that wants to speak, that hasn't filled out a speaking request? That has not?
On the actual public hearing? And there's a form, if you'll write your name and address on the form.
There's a form up there.
Nowhere?
There's your form up here.
Somebody take that sheet of paper off?
Oh, I'll go sign it afterwards.
It just needs to be made, because if people come up, that one, they can do it.
Heather Gates, I live at two seven three zero six West Fifth Avenue, I'm speaking against the raise, I'm not, I understand we have to have a raise, every year we have to, it's just the way our economy works now, but sixty-one percent is steep, and it's a lot, you're looking at ninety, most of Hilliard, our town, is on a fixed income, social security, disability, whichever one, retirement, not everybody can afford a hundred dollar water bill on top of, a two hundred dollar light bill on top of, there's seven hundred dollar, eight hundred dollar rent if they're lucky nowadays, because it's just the cheapest rent in Hilliard is over eighteen hundred dollars, that's ridiculous, I understand it's the economy, but you guys raising our bill to that extent is, it's ridiculous, it completely is ridiculous, twenty-five percent, that's a good possibility, but sixty-one, no, that is ridic, that's robbery, and honestly, if you guys would not buy such ridiculous expensive vehicles that don't need to be purchased, or hire people, and then pay for their certifications after their ninety days, we wouldn't be in the position that we are in, you guys put applications out, ask people to fill out, get hired that have certain qualifications, hire people without those qualifications, and then after their ninety days, go and pay for them, you're in this predicament because you guys don't follow your own rules, and that's the problem, you're more concerned about retirement, or your thirty years, or making sure this looks good here, but you know, suffer over here, and it's not okay, I know you guys don't like me very much because I speak the truth, but you guys need to understand, if there's more of us that's willing to speak up, there's a problem, and that's where you guys need to look at it, not raising our bill sixty-one percent when there's other things that could be fixed differently, grants that have been applied for, where's the money where the grants were applied, that's the problem, where's the money at, you guys say you have no debt, obviously you have something, there's a problem somewhere, figure it out, but don't take it out on us, we're the ones that put you there, remember that, well, not two of you, but you know, have a good night.
All right, do we have anyone else that hasn't filled out a speaking form that wants to speak on this item? Okay, Mr. John, come on. If you'll tell us your name and address, please, sir.
John Russell, thirty-seven one fifty Walker Street, I realize after that First Lady's original doom and gloom scenario, that the earth is gonna self-implode, I could park the Red Sea and not change y'all's mind about voting to raise rates, I've been here before and complained about the rates, and I was told that my complaint was duly noted, but the town council voted to raise rates anyhow, then I asked, why can't, maybe we get more businesses here to help not only with water and sewer rates, but the millage rate for property tax, and I was told that, well, we need more rooftops and business will come, so now Holland, Walt, Greenbrier are coming, hundreds of homes, and the water pressure right now is subpar at best, and all those new homes will make it worse, and right now, there's a leak on New Front, and I know Public Works is aware, because there's traffic cones and paint on the road, but there's water still trickling across the road, and I just wanted to know, are the current residents asked to continue shouldering the increased cost of infrastructure, also known as Public Works, and that's all I have.
Thanks, sir. G A, good evening, sign that, please. All right, do we have anyone else not, that hasn't turned in a speaking request? All right, do we have a motion closed, closed public hearing?
Motion closed.
All those opposed? All right, now we're gonna open up item number, yeah, that's whenever we, we're gonna talk about the item now with, all right, so this is, the town, council to consider adopting ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh eight on second and final reading, now we'll have the people that you filled out a forms, who's this, Kobe Cooper? You have three minutes, name and address and?
Yes, sir, first off, good evening, my name's Cody Cooper, I live at three seven one zero five West Third Street, council members, I address you regarding the proposed forty-nine percent sewer increase, Florida law mandates that all utility rates must be fair and reasonable under Florida statute three six six decimal zero three, the review process for such rate increases is detailed in Florida statute three six six decimal zero six, which requires regulatory review to ensure the fair, just, and reasonable standard is met, the immediate forty-nine percent increase poses a substantial financial burden on the community, a nearly fifty percent increase seems to challenge the standard and requires rigorous justification, under Florida statute, section one one nine decimal zero one, all municipal records are public and open for inspection, the public should have a significant time to review the specific documentation justifying the expenditures, specifically the detailed financial analysis, I think that's what we saw just a minute ago. And all this should support the magnitude of the increase, we fully support the need to maintain and upgrade our town's critical infrastructure, to align with the legal standard and mitigate immediate financial hardship on the great citizens of Hilliard, I propose a phased sewer rate increase alongside the justifiable expenditure documentation, such as a phased increase, like twenty-four percent, maybe this year, twenty-five percent next year, in order to get to where we need to be in the future, this alternative offers community relief while still funding infrastructure needs, we believe this phased approach is a prudent and physically responsible compromise that balances the town's operational needs with the residents' ability to pay, I urge the council to adopt this balanced approach and compliance with Florida statutes three six six zero three and zero six, and allow this to become a fair, just, and reasonable expenditure for the town of Hilliard taxpayers. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. All right, now we have Ray Schulte. You pass? All right, put on there, Kimberly Oden. Name and address, please.
Hi, good evening, my name is Kimberly Oden, and I live at two seven four one two two Murray Road in Hilliard, I'm here representing as the property manager, Eastwood Oaks Apartments and its residents, and the owners, Boardwalk Wealth and Alexander Properties Group, opposing the significant increase to the water sewer bill, so this increase impacts our community at Eastwood Oaks with a hundred and four units, we house seniors, team at the FAA, young families, we do everything in our power to not pass increases along, we're all living paycheck to paycheck, right, I understand the, the infrastructure needs upgrades, what I can't wrap my brain around is that this high of an increase in this short amount of time, that this issue wasn't known previous, where we could, again, I'm gonna say phasing in incremental increases over a period of time rather than the large increase all at once. Thank you.
All right, now, we have Roger West.
Good evening, Roger West, addresses on record, in protected, there's several of y'all that I consider very, very good friends, but I can't stand behind you on, on this one, I would normally go to the end of the earth for y'all, but this is, this is ridiculous, I don't know about y'all, but I didn't get a sixty-one percent increase in my income, and then for y'all to propose this big of an increase, twelve percent is, is not, I don't, I don't like it, forty-nine percent, that's, that's sinful, I, I don't know how in good conscience that y'all could even consider a sixty-one percent increase in fees, our water and sewer is already high compared to my, my father-in-law in Georgia, Kingsland, my bill is higher than his, and his includes a garbage pickup, is water that much more expensive than Florida, but search your souls, forty-nine percent increase, that, that sounds more like something that would come out of Washington DC, not Hilliard, and I, I love my town, I love Hilliard, but this is a, this is ludicrous, and I really feel y'all need to search your souls.
All right, now we have? All right, now we have Jean... What's the last name?
Scott.
Scott, okay, Ms. Scott.
I'm basically, I concur with...
Ms. Scott, name and address, please.
Jeannie Scott. My address is 392306 Prospect Lanning Road, Hilliard, Florida. I do have a property in Hilliard also that this affects. I first just want to say that I do strongly concur with the other people's vote, especially Cody Cooper and Roger West. But what I'm speaking on and what I wanted to ask about, which came out in the mail this, when I got the copy of my water bill, is your Section 5886 annual rate increase tied to inflation. And then in that ordinance, it says it's effective October 1st every year. I'm not sure. I can't recall, but I'm thinking almost every year y'all do increase. Is that correct? Yes. Thank you, Lisa. But then the reason it's saying in this section, annual increase, so we can expect it, but I agree with the other audience participants that it's a little high. And then it says in here that it's set forth above by a percentage equal to the annual increase in the municipal cost index published by American City and County Magazine. Can anybody tell me what that is?
It's published each year, and it is what we have followed all of the past years since adopting that section in our ordinance. But at this time, we went for a loan that's tied to a grant to be able to rehabilitate our sewer system. And they will not loan us any money until we increase our rates because we don't have enough revenue to pay for a loan. And so that also allows us to raise them more if needed. But we can do it at least by that much each year. And you can Google American Cities and County Magazine.
I did. I did Google them.
And it has all of the different price indexes, and we follow the municipal.
Actually, it's not accessible to regular people. You have to have a business to become part of it. And I just, the way you have it listed in here, your annual rate increase tied to inflation, but you've given us no documents on inflation comparisons. And I did, I did, because just the name of that, published by American City and County Magazine, is that like a magazine publication? Because when I Googled it, it's not only just called American City and County Magazine, it's now American City, County, and Smart Cities div are combining. So I don't know if anybody can explain that to me exactly what it is. But your ordinance reads here that it's on tied to inflation. But I got no information, you know, any information on inflation. I guess that was my timer, right?
Thank you. All right, now... Do we have any discussion on this item?
I'd just like to note that I put some handouts in the back. I hope that everybody, there was enough for everybody. But in this, I tried to give a snippet clip of the information that brought us to where we're at, showing our operating loss. It dates back way further than the five years. And what that's doing is that's decreasing our reserves each year. And then I've also showed for 24, 25, and 23, 24, the expenses that the town has had in asset management. And it's basically our sewer system. We have clay pipes from the 70s. We've been trying now for probably the last eight years to get funding through grants to be able to do this project. The project's over $11 million. And so we finally, and we've also been going to our senator and our representative, who are definitely behind us on this, and hopefully can get this funded soon for the construction portion. But you have a planning phase first, and then a design, then you get to construction. And it's with DEP. It's the State Revolving Fund that the man that wrote the letter had mentioned that we are going for. And it's tied to grant money. So basically, they give you a loan to do the first phase, which is planning. And in that loan, they give you 50% loan and 50% loan forgiveness, which is really grant money. But you have to qualify for the loan money. We have money to pay that loan off through our American Recovery Funds that we have been holding, waiting for that fund to become available. But that doesn't matter to them. You have to qualify. And because we don't have sufficient revenues, we do not qualify. And so that's what prompted us reaching out to Florida Rural Water Association to do a rate study because it was required by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection in order to qualify for this program. And it's basically our last resort. We've tried funding through several other sources with grants, and this is the only grant that we could find. And unfortunately, it's tied to a loan, so therefore, we have to qualify. And so these rates going up, it is because we are so small, so we don't have a lot of users to place the cost amongst, is why it's so much higher than maybe some of the smaller or other towns around. But the rate increase at 12% for water and 49% for sewer on an average 3,000-gallon residential bill would make that bill go from $61.91 to $81.80, a difference of $19.89 a month, which equates to about $240 a year. And that's on the residential side. And if you're water-only, it goes from $28.26 to $31.66. And that, again, like I said, it's on an average 3,000-gallon customer, and that math is less than $3. I also placed a copy attached to that of our capital plan for the 25, 26-year, showing what Ms. Stewart had mentioned about the fact that we are already, for this year and for next year, having to obligate $600,000 of our capital one-cent sales tax just to assist, to not have to make these rates go any higher. And at the end of all of this, nobody wants to raise these rates in this town. It's either that or everything's falling apart, and we're running out of money to pay for it, to be managed, and asset management. Because, like she said, we adopted a schedule that we would maintain. And unless we're maintaining it, they're not gonna loan us any money to continue. And like I said, that's where we're at.
How did we get there?
Did you get one of these and look at all of it? What did you look at? I mean, that's all the repairs that are being done underground. That's how we got there.
How we do a $200,000 of annuals?
It happened right there at Shady Lane. That's what it costed. We had to pay for the asphalt on top of it. I mean, that's, it's happening every day, and we just, we don't, we can't make money. This is the only, this is the resource that we have for this. So it's to borrow money. The only way we can borrow money is to raise our water and sewer rates. It's not, it's not popular with any of us. I promise you that. Every one of us are having to pay it. It's not gonna build a bank for the town of Hilliard. It's just gonna put us where we need to be to make repairs like we need to do and to be able to pay back when we, to be able to... What?
For the moment.
What do you mean, for the moment?
We factored.
It's just gonna put us there for the moment.
And we factored everything.
Come back next year, same thing.
Next year, there is another increase, and then it will go down after that.
Every year. You do the MCI no matter what. Even if inflation is lower than the MCI, you still go by the MCI. So you take the better of the two always. And that's why you have that clause in there that says, oh, that's a council.
How much do you think it's went up in the past 20 years? It's $20 for a water bill. I mean, how much could it have went up? Think about that.
No, I understand.
That's the, that's the problem. And there was a lot of years that there was no rate increases. So that's how we got where we were with no rate increases for years.
That's my biggest argument, is that the council from 98 to 2010 did absolutely nothing to increase our rates. We got here today because of yesterday. And I'm probably the one who has not liked this the most. I've been the most vocal with this council about it. They know how I feel. I do not like it anymore. The problems arising is just what Mr. Russell said, even when this comes to rates, and I think you've come. Is that the asset management in is what's starting to ease. It's the stuff that's breaking every day, and we're repairing, that we're going into our general fund. When we go into the general fund, that $600,000 that we're supposed to be doing other projects with aren't getting done. $204,000, that was basically a whole year's of added oil tax that went away right there overnight. We didn't have any control.
Wasn't that the responsibility on Grand Street?
No, that's our sewer.
That's our sewer system.
We need to have people talking to mics and council.
Mr. Schult, I understand, and I'm not a big fan of that at all. And Mr. Russell, to finish off, we do have O'Reilly's McDonald's coming. We are seeing some growth on our commercial end. It's taking time, and it's slow. We're getting rooftop. We are trying to fix yesterday's mistakes today. We cannot control it. All we can do is try to repair it. They put us here. We're here today because they put us here yesterday. All we can try to do is move forward and fix the problems we have. The State Revolving Fund came to us. We spent two years going to Tallahassee. They told us, if you don't have enough money coming in to support it, they will not loan me money until it's here. And at the end of the day, we don't have $13 million to replace a clay pipe. Every day, we go over our, 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 and our sewer intake, especially when it rains, it's causing us more energy and more chemicals to treat that chemical, I'm sorry, that fluid as it comes in and goes out. That's the problem we're having on that north part of town, the mid-north section of town, because that is our oldest clay pipe. And we're, we're trying our hardest, but this is one side. Either we do something today and fix it, or wait until we have a big problem. We've got four or five manholes down. We've got busted pipes, and we've got sewer full everywhere in the dishes. And that's un, that's not the way to do things. That's not right to the environment. It's not right to the citizens. What we need to fix is fix what we came today. We need to get back into Tallahassee and try to get our legislators to get us the money. The past couple of years, the state has withheld a lot of the appropriations funds. This past year, our representative Black and Senator Dean both, sorry, Senator Orber, both told us that you're gonna have to get a rate study done because we do not feel comfortable. The state does not feel comfortable in the revolving fund section of giving you guys the money and us writing up procreation to attempt to cover that portion. But we're getting to the point where we cannot stop hoping the grant comes in, the money comes in from somewhere. At some point, we have to hit it head-on, and we've got to address the problem. We cannot let the problem get any bigger. I tell you what, I've had the hardest problem, and these guys will tell you. I've been the one, can we taper it out? Can we do something? But at the end of the day, we're going to have to fix it. We have to fix it. It falls on our plates today.
That's all doing well. I appreciate the explanation. This goes back 15, 20 years.
Well, the bottom line is, I'll say this. The bottom line is, this is where we would be now regardless. This is where we would be with rates today had we raised them little by little. We still would be at this number. It's a big number today, but we would still be at this number today paying water and sewer bills.
But if CPI had been following, if you guys had known CPI.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Ms. Gates. Ms. Ms. Gates, Ms. Gates.
Ms. Gates. Now, whenever we have comment from the gallery, we, it cannot be heard on YouTube. So if you do have a comment, we do ask that you speak, come up to the microphone and speak. I mean, whenever you're at, whenever you're speaking out there in the crowd, we can't hear. And the lawyer can't hear what you're saying. Well, you've already had your three minutes. All right, do we have any other comment, input, discussion, council?
So why can't, do I have to state my name again?
Yes, please.
John Russell. I still live, I guess, at 37150 Walker Street. What, why can't we do a small thing like the national debt? They can't pay it off. We'll never pay it off. But why do we have to become solvent, you know? It's just like kicking the can down the road. Can't small-town governments do the same thing as DC? They're not paying bills. The ticker on trillions every three days is doubling the debt.
They can't print money, Jim.
Yeah.
So no, we can't do that.
All right.
All right, Ms. Gates, if you do have something.
Ms. Gates, obviously. He said, you guys, it happens from yesterday. Who's the four of you, I'm saying four because I'm including Ms. Purvis in this, were here years ago when this all started. Y'all's fault. Y'all didn't bring in the increases or whatever. And I understand that you guys have to have your pockets too, and have people pat you on the back and say, good job, awesome. But as town people who live on a fixed income, this pay raise this fast is not okay. Little by little, absolutely, but not 61%. We have failure in sewers? That's not our infrastructure. That's y'all's poor management skills and trying to figure out the right places years ago, not 10 years later. When you guys knew this was all gonna happen, and you knew, oh, we have clay pipes, let's upscale our system. No, you guys want to bring in subdivisions and ruin our pressure because you want to fund subdivisions that's not even in the town area. Now we're having three more hundred, whatever amount of homes right across from Winn-Dixie, and that's gonna get into our water, I'm almost positive. You got, you can shake your head all you want, that's fine. But okay, right now, right now, okay. But it's all gonna still be connected. Okay, sure, you could say that. You guys say no private wells, but yet you made, you can't even dig a well. You're making him dig a well. Are we gonna be allowed to have a well on our property? Because obviously, that's where it's gonna end up going, where everybody's gonna end up digging their own private well. If you guys are gonna increase our water this much this fast, nobody's gonna be able to pay it. It's ridiculous. Y'all four need to think about what y'all did 10 years ago and not blame everybody now. Thank you for pointing that out, by the way. Congratulations.
All right, do we have any other? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Brittany Cooper. Cody Cooper is my husband. I live at 37105 West Third Street in Hilliard. And I would just like to ask you guys, what would, what could the lowest rate you could do in this first year be? And I know that you're saying that you're going off of a, some, some type of online MCI weighted average. And I know that we would be there, like you said, we would be there anyways if y'all had implemented this before. We're not from here. My husband's military, and we just moved here. We bought a house. So we really like Hilliard a lot. And we're just wondering if it wouldn't be easier for it to be just like, you know, like, like we said, like even 25 or 26% increase and let it cover that, you know, she was talking about water is good, but waste isn't good. And, and y'all are gonna increase it next year anyways. So why don't we start with a lower, more manageable rate for everybody in the community that really needs this, I mean, you can hear them, they're not happy. And I know you guys aren't even happy about it, but just something lower and give back to them not the 41, just something a little bit lower to help them out. That's all, that's all I'm asking, if you guys can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg Franklin, 49194 River Bluff Drive. This might be unpopular to everyone here, but thank you guys for doing the job because y'all have a very tough job of sitting up there doing what you're doing. No one wants to have a 49% increase. You guys don't want to have. Every one of y'all are from Hilliard. You all live here. You all do business in Hilliard with people. 49% sounds like a lot, but like Lisa says, you break that down over average, that's 19-something dollars a month. That's less than a dollar a day. So I don't want to see increases, but I don't want to see our infrastructure go so far downhill that's gonna, no way to get out of. So again, thank you guys for doing the job that y'all are doing.
All right, any other discussion? Skip. Even though you're on the board, still, name and address. an address, even though we know you.
Harold Frye Jr., 37328 West Seventh Street, Hilliard, Florida. I've lived here 15 years. I come to just about every town board meeting, every workshop. The discussion about the water rates has gone on for how long? Three months? Four months at least? I come to these meetings, we see maybe three, four, five people a meeting. You can't keep kicking the can down the road by not raising the rates and fixing what's going to get really bad really quick. I own a house here. I've got a single income. I live alone. I don't want to see the rates go up, but at this point, you have no choice. You have no choice. You can't operate in a deficit and rob Peter to pay Paul. You can't keep doing it. It's what our federal government does. They can just print money to make up. We can't. You gotta do what you gotta do.
Thanks, Skip.
My name is Dan Burek. I'm the general manager for the hot rod shop up, up the street here. Um, I came from the Tampa Bay area, which is a huge metropolis, and we have a whole lot more research and sources than the little community of Hilliard. I get it. I listened carefully to what Jared had to say, and I agree with what he's got. As a business owner, we pay sales tax to the state of Florida. Within that sales tax, we have a discretionary tax that goes to the county. Have you guys asked the county for any kind of assistance with this?
They took $100,000 off on the mission.
Okay. Well, I, I understand, you know, being a very logical, methodical, mechanical kind of person, when stuff's broken, you've got to fix it. I agree. If the system's antiquated and it needs help, I've heard one experience that, that because our driveway got torn up and they went to make a simple plumbing repair. Well, they dug down in the turf and they repaired the pipe and they obviously disturbed everything else that was there. And they were chasing the leak up the street because every time they dug the pipes up and disturbed it, it created another leak. It's broken. I get it. I agree with this, but I think it could probably be done in increments, maybe a 25% increase the first year and maybe 5% thereafter for the next five or so. I don't know if that was, you know, an alternative solution or not, but, um, something to think about. But I, you know, I agree. If the system's broken, you got to fix it.
I will comment on what you said. So this year, coming into our budget, the county was nice enough to reduce our gas tax by $100,000 to, because they said they miscalculated the numbers over the years. That money went to Callahan. The county, Norfolk, and Beach saw a decrease in theirs.
I know when I was, when I was down in Pinellas County, we had a, um, a penny for Pinellas tax that was attached to the gasoline sales that helped with the infrastructure and road paving and, and little miscellaneous things like that. That might be a consideration also. I don't know.
What was your address again?
Uh, it, it's actually 552026 US Highway One. I don't officially live in Hilliard. The business is here, but I, I live up in Folkeston, but that's the only address I can give you at the moment. Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. Getting to y'all.
Well, I mean, got to cut my throat through that. This year, our two manholes have already come in $18,400 over what was budgeted to repair two of our worksmanages. What was it? It was 18,400.
Totaling 14, 44,000.
Totally 44,000, yes, sir.
All right. Do we, do we have a motion or any other discussion?
Well, I'll make the motion if nobody else is going to do it. Uh, motion to adopt ordinance number 2025-08 on the second of our meeting.
Second. Ms. Purvis, if you'll call the role, please.
Councilman Pickett.
Yes.
Councilman Michaels.
Yes.
Councilman Wallace.
Yes.
Councilman Hunter.
Yes.
Council President Sims.
Yes.
All right. Item number two. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go to item three. Town Council to appoint Michael Holman as planning zoning board member for the remaining three-year term vacated by Josetta Lawson, ending December 2025, and, and to serve a new term for January 26th through December 28th. You too. Thank you.
Motion to appoint Michael Holman to the planning and zoning board.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Item number four. Town Council to appoint Dalton Hood as a planning and zoning board member for the remaining three-year term vacated by Wendy Prather, ending December 2026. Ms. Wallace, or do we have a motion?
Motion to appoint Dalton Hood as a planning and zoning board member.
Second.
General motion.
What's that?
General motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Would you like the second?
There's too much, too much noise.
Would you like to be the second?
I'll be the second. That's fine.
All right. All those in favor? Oppose? All right. Item number five. Town Council to consider ordinance number 2025-17 and ordinance of the town of Hilliard, Nassau County, Florida, amend chapter 14 of the town code to create an article addressing unsafe structures and/or conditions providing for conflict, separability, administrative correction of scribner's error, publication, and effective date. We adopt this on the first reading and set the public, that's public hearing and final reading for December 18th.
And although my name's Andrea, I believe Leanne was something she'd like to say.
I do. Uh, we addressed this in the workshop a few months ago. Um, this is in response to Nassau County changing from a code board to a code magistrate to make it more clear and understanding what the guidelines are. Christian and his team worked on this for several months to help us put together something fair, equitable, and really, really close to what all of you looked at in the workshop. Mr. Dale has seen it. Mr. Brian has seen it. And this just allows clarity to your unsafe structures so that we can move forward if we have a code issue. But the, the entire layout is here in your packet for you to review.
We don't need action tonight.
Motion.
A motion, and you're going to set a public hearing for December 18th, I believe, Lisa?
Yes. Yes.
Done a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion. Mrs. Adoption on first reading and set a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
So you have a second. Just did. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Item number six. Town Council approval of position process for Leanne Wallace's transition from introductory probationary status to regular full-time. Mr. Hobbs.
I had a big typo on the end date. It's not July 17th is today's date. She's been, ain't put a work time value, but she's been there for the department.
No, that's actually from when it happened. That's why.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Item number seven. Town Council approval of position process for Colt Gandy's transition from introductory probationary status to regular full-time. Again, Mr. Hobbs.
Yeah, very decent employee. Can't make major complaints so far. I don't bring them full-time and.
Motion to approve. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Item number eight. Town Council approval of the minutes for November 6, 2025, public hearing and regular meeting. Motion to approve. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Item number nine. Town Council approval of Nassau County Council on Aging donation for fiscal year 2025-26 to assist seniors with their water and sewer bills in the amount of $10,000.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Item number.
That's where you go past that. I just want to say that that is the best donation that we make in this town, and it is to help seniors that qualify on a fixed income, and it offsets their water and sewer bill by $30 a month each.
And it comes from penalties.
Yeah.
And late penalties is where that comes from.
All right. Item number 10. Town Council approval of Peters and Yaffe Engineering payable through October 31st, 2025. Project name, Design West Sixth Street in the amount of $5,642.30.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right. We don't have any added items. Do we have any public comment? You've already had your three minutes.
I'm going to take another three. Harold Frye Jr., 37328 West Seventh Street. Gentlemen, ma'am, it is a thankless job up there. You can't please everyone, but you've done the right thing looking after the town as a whole. No one wants to see rates go up. I'm a single guy, live alone. I, my mortgage went up $150 a month. What do I do? I gotta pay it. We can't keep operating in a deficit and robbing Peter to pay Paul. No one wanted to see the rates go up. No one wants them to go up. But in the same token, we can't let the pipes of the ground fall apart either. Thank you. Sorry it had to be said like that, but thank you.
Thanks, Skip. Anyone else?
My name's Shane Barber. Live 37154 South Pine Street, Hilliard, Florida. I don't want the rates to go up as much as everybody else. I live here too. I'm fortunate that I can afford it, so it doesn't bother me. However, I will say this. Working for JEA, I, I have seen the repercussions of the town or the city not paying and, and fixing and keeping their infrastructure up. Things will happen that, I wish I probably should have shared this when everybody else was here. Normandy Village is one of them. The DEP, Florida DEPs will come in and they're going to force in this area, somebody like JEA to come in here. And we're going to take it over and we're going to fix it and we're going to get everything back right. And if the people don't like the rates that they're fixing to look at tonight, they're not going to like them when that happens. It's the same way that's going to start happening at Atlantic City. It's the same thing for Atlantic Beach, Neptune Beach. That's one of them. It's also going down in the Mayport at the base. But it's going to start happening. And so it's nice to see, unfortunately, that our rates are going to go up, but it's nice to see that we're trying to take a preemptive strike here before something like that happens. Because I'm telling you, if you don't do it, it's going to happen. And as much as I would like to have JEA right here in Hilliard because that's who I work for, I don't necessarily want it under that pretext, you know? I want us to take care of us. And if that's what we have to do, that's what we got to do. And I, I just know that it's unfortunate, but it's the right decision at this point to do that and to keep that going because a hostile takeover is not what we want. And if you didn't do that this evening, that's, that's what you were going to get. That's going to come. So thank y'all.
Thank you, Shane. Yeah, you, uh, you, you did make an excellent point that if we didn't do something and we couldn't and our infrastructure fell apart, that, yeah, we could be ripe for a takeover.
DEP will do it. There, there's not if, ands, or buts about it. If, if you don't take care of it, the DEP will force someone to come in and do it. And, and it doesn't matter. I mean, everybody can get the voice to say what they want to about it. They're going to do it if you don't do it. The other thing I, I would, wish I would have did it first, you know, but I want everybody to voice their frustration is, you know, we've had several meetings. I've, I've even talked to somebody like, listen, you want to wait until they come up to the last minute to vote to approve this? Where were you at the five or six meetings beforehand when they had all these workshops about it? I didn't get to make every one of them. I wanted to. I wanted to be informed about what's going on. Don't wait till the last minute when they're going to vote on it to try to come up here and change minds because that's not going to happen. It's, we're at a point where we can't, we can't go backwards. But, but yes, to, to everything going on, if you don't do it, DEP will come in and do it.
Thanks, Shane. Any other public input? Seeing none. Uh, Councilman Wallace?
I had committed a great job of veterans today, the ones that were able to make it. George Friesman, Representative Black, but it was really nice to have Representative Bean come all the way down from Washington. Not only did he speak, but he stayed and actually talked to our, to our town people, answered questions, and, uh, really invested some time that Saturday. It was, it was good to have him here. And I know there's something else, but I cannot.
All right. Uh, Councilman Michaels?
Everything's a little good at Parks and Rec. It's been a little earlier this evening and, uh, it's rocking and rolling.
All right. Councilman Hunter?
Nothing to add, sir.
Councilman Pickett?
Nothing to add.
Council President Sims?
Well, I do want to speak to one thing about what was said. And yes, I've sat up here on this council for a long time. Last term, my last term, this term, but anyway, I've sat up here for a long time and we have been through a lot. We have continued to raise rates early, early on. I've, I've seen us get grants and I've had faith that we were going to get grants to fix our problems. So yes, we got here by not raising rates as much as we should because of things just like tonight. It doesn't matter whether we raise it 3% or 5%, you're going to have three to 10 people in here complaining absolutely no matter what, what the increase is. When the increase was the MCI last year, there was people complaining about that. That was only 3% last year and people complained about it. So now it's, you know, well, why can't you only go to 25? Last year we was at three and they complained about it. So we did a rate study. We were told what we needed to do to try to fix the problem. That's what we did. I'm sorry, but I feel like that we, we all pay that. Every one of us sitting up here pay water and sewer, I think, every one of us. Uh, so it affects us just like it affects the public. But it also, at the end of the day, was the right thing to do for Hilliard. And if nobody likes that, I'm sorry. Nobody likes me for it. I'm sorry. But it was the right thing to do for Hilliard. And that's what I've done for all the years I've been here. It's the right thing for Hilliard. So that's all I got to say.
All right. Um, I've just got a few things. Yeah, I do want to echo Councilman Wallace's sentiments on the, uh, Veterans Day. It was nice to see the veterans out there and it was nice of, um, parents to, to take the time to come down and, and speak to everybody. Um, I do appreciate that. Next week is Thanksgiving. I hope that everybody has a, gets to spend time with their family and, you know, enjoy them and don't overeat on the turkey. But next weekend is our festival, our hallmark, our Hilliard. I know you've probably seen the Christmas trees being lit up out there right now. But next weekend, we've got the, our market for, during the day, and then the tree lighting that night. So that's all I've got.
Since there's a lot of people watching tonight, there are a few more trees out there that are still up for grabs. I think they're worth a day. So if there's anybody that wants to rent a tree, they're out there.
Okay. Um, Mr. Hobbs?
Sponsor.
Not to add, um, that we've done a lot of work on the west side of town on drainage. Charles has been doing a great job ever seeing that. And, um, I was going to say something about the, uh, tree lighting next week, and I was looking forward to that, to be here for, with everybody else, you know, through the town with that. So that's all I have.
And we also replaced a fire hydrant.
Yeah, we replaced one today on Henry Smith, and then we got a few more to replace. We're in the works to get them installed.
The one at Henry Smith and Pond? Is that the one y'all did today?
Yeah, or yesterday. We done that yesterday. Uh, they're scheduled to be tested on December 1st of WWG.
Very good.
Thank you.
Corey Henry.
New front of one, three.
I don't know, Charles, Charles.
You're not wearing.
Yeah.
Dressing the water brick on the frame between, Charles Chivria, Assistant Public Works Director. Um, regarding the new front, um, water leak between Illinois and Florida Street, we're just waiting on locates to be able to dig up the road. So it's a two-inch water line. It's a service line that's leaking. We know that. So.
Thanks for clarification on that.
Yeah. Thanks. Ms. Wallace, you've been added to the group of.
Been added to the list?
Yes.
Um, O'Reilly's broke ground this week.
It's all right.
And McDonald's has had its site plan approval from the planning and zoning board, and they're in the process of getting their building permits approved now.
Ms. Wallace?
Do we, do we get the right-of-way squared away to the county?
No, they do not have their right-of-way.
No, they do not have their right-of-way permits yet for their driveway entrance or to bring the water line across one oh eight. For McDonald's, that's to hold up, it's a county permit, we're waiting on.
Allison?
I'll be up. My business is so long tonight, Kitty, don't you worry about it, I'll be calling you tomorrow.
Ms. Purvis?
I just have the one thing about the water and sewer, um, I worked countless hours with Ms. Diane Stewart with Florida Rule. We took into account every single thing we could think of, growth, loan, uh, moving over, sales tax, capital money, which is going to prevent us from being able to do any of our other capital projects next year. Because between doing them this year and what we're spending this year in the water and sewer funds, that won't leave us but enough next year just to put over in the six hundred thousand to move over. So forty-nine percent was a lot, but it's the initial and the fact that we were three months late collecting it by starting in January, um, instead of October. And then next year, there will be another increase, but after next year is when it will start leveling out and reducing. And we should be in a lot better place and hopefully we will, by raising them, get this loan approved so we can get this grant money. And if everything's willing, um, we will make it in the budget and stay, um, when the governor signs it, we'll have that three point five million to cover the construction cost that we cannot afford a loan for.
Yeah, I know that the forty-nine percent is a shock and I, I hate saying the percentage. I would rather do the, how much is going to increase, not a percentage, because, yeah, it was going to go up, sewer, an average sewer bill is going to go up sixteen dollars and forty-nine cent a month.
I know, and I could kick myself after that notice went out, statute requires percentage, but there's nothing that says you couldn't have put a scenario. And had I've been able to do that, I think that would have helped a lot because you hear forty-nine and twelve and you say sixty-one and you think you're going to get a double bill. In reality, it's, you know.
Less than twenty dollars a month. All right, um, is that it?
Yes, sir.
Counselor?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
All right. Thank you all. I'm going home.